I would like to call Thursday, December 20th, 2018. Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call.
Chairman Papa Holter. Vice Chair Anafri.
Here.
Secretary of Siana.
Here.
Janet Osama.
Here.
Jerome Kent D'Amara.
Here.
Vincent Mays.
Here.
Cynthia White.
Here.
Please apply. This is the... Oh, please, it's over there. I won't do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Any dishears comments limited to the agenda items? Okay. And we have lots to address tonight.
Night of Ops.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd or 1st? Make a motion. I'll make a motion, sorry. 2nd. Read it. Read it. Make a motion to approve.
I approved, uh, to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2018. Board of Education meeting as submitted. 2nd.
Any discussion, any changes? All in favor? Aye. 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 Okay. Superintendent has received a resignation from Chelsea Colonnais School Psychologist at Jerome Harrison Elementary School effective November 18th. Someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Chelsea Colonnais School Psychologist at Jerome Harrison Elementary School effective November 30th, 2018.
2nd. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah. Superintendent has received a resignation from David Carlyle School Psychologist at North Bramford Intermediate School effective November 21st, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of David Carlyle School Psychologist at North Bramford Intermediate School effective November 21st, 2018.
2nd. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Appointments there? Okay, appointments. You have some recommendations for winter coaches?
I'm going to pass the list to my right so you all will receive a copy and can look at both the middle, intermediate, and high school. So at this time, we're fully staffed with our abroad coaching appointments for the winter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve winter coaches as submitted by administration.
2nd. Any discussion? Need a minute? Do you have a second? Sorry. Stop. Roll call. Tamina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Okay. We have a lead request which will take into executive session.
That's control.
Okay. Two of them that will take into executive session. And now we're on the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of you for moving through operations so that we could start a little bit early tonight. And I hope you enjoyed the co-op March of Vanna as much as I did. They really put a great deal of time and effort. And they're always playing throughout the way, so you don't really get a chance to see them, but I really think it's important that you do when we co-op with them and recognize their efforts and then to have our youngsters come in. It's a great way to start the night.
Who sets up the football game schedules? Do the coaches do that? They schedule the games?
Yeah.
Because it would be nice. I was speaking to one of the women in there. It'd be nice if you could somehow coordinate it on a bi-week for East Haven. We had a home game and then March of Vanna could come to North Bramford so people could stay there.
Could see them.
If they're on a bi-week.
Right. And we don't play them anymore and they're in two different conferences, so it's just a matter of trying to line up a bi-week.
Right. Their bi-week with our home game. That would be kind of nice.
Yeah, absolutely. Starting off with recognition, excuse me. It's an honor to, and I'm going to leave this verbatim because I don't want to miss anything here, to congratulate Ms. Paula Younger, who's here this evening with her husband, as the North Bramford Public Schools 2019 District Teacher of the Year. Paula has been a speech and language pathologist in North Bramford for the last 31 years. She works in our Project Pride program. If you're not aware of it, it's a split classroom that meets four days during the week and then she does a lot of work on that fifth day of working with the students with their needs, kindergarten through second grade. Her intelligence nature and amazing sense of humor makes a positive impact of everyone that she meets. She knows her students inside and out and she's passionate about what she does. Her husband is here this evening and we're so proud to have him with us. Paula has seven children, so she knows what it's like to split her time with her family and with her career. And we're just so proud and indebted to what you do each and every day. And I know Suzanne is here and Beth, if you'd like to add anything to that, I would welcome her.
Well, I would just say a few things in that. We are so proud and happy that Paula be part of our district. She works with our very youngest students and works so hard to improve their skills. She co-teaches in the preschool program, which has been an invaluable support to the special education teacher and allows our students to get the benefit of two talented educators during the course of their school day. The other thing that strikes me as really important and special about Paula is her ability to communicate with families. You know, the planning placement team process in special education with all of these procedures can be really intimidating to families. And so they're meeting us for the first time. And Paula is just so wonderful at reassuring parents that it's going to be okay. Number one, she knows what she's doing and she's very clear about what needs to be done in working with students and has, is really able to demonstrate her expertise and knowledge of her craft. And then in addition, she helps them to understand that how she's going to make things happen and that there certainly will be progress and how she's going to show parents that their children will make progress. And so it's so important for families who feel like when students are identified as eligible for special education for the very first time, that can be really daunting and scary for some families. But I have to say that Paula's warmth and her encouraging style and her level of knowledge really helped reassure parents and people about it. So we're just delighted to have Paula be part of our district. She's done a wonderful job and I just couldn't wait to congratulate her.
Thanks.
There's no other Paula Younger. There really isn't. Paula is everywhere. She knows her kids inside and out, inside and out. She's a team player. You've been to steal the warmth as soon as you meet Paula. She cares about kids, she cares about families. And I'm just so blessed to know her and both of their parents.
Thank you. You're welcome. Paula, you have a very big, more appreciation. And then if you could walk around, this is the Walk of Fame. And I had the pleasure of accompanying Paula through the state recognition at the shoot one when we were there. Three weeks? Two weeks? Two weeks ago. And it was such an honor to be in her presence, so.
Some of you I've known for a while.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you. Congrats. Who you all are, seen your names before. Congratulations, yes. You actually help me with my, uh, set time.
Sure, give me a call.
Yes. How are you? Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
We're going to take the telephone.
You get it, bud?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There were a number of updates that the administrative team have included in the packet. I'm sure you all had a chance to go through. And if there are any questions for any administrators, if not, I'm going to move on.
I agree with you.
Okay. Under field trips, I do not need approval for this, but I just want to update you that the music program under Katie Traynor, who you just obviously saw perform, will be traveling approximately 25 students to Six Flags in Massachusetts for annual music competition on May 3rd. So we're just giving you an early heads up on that. Professional development, Tracy's here this evening. I don't know what you covered prior to, but if you want to just update the board on the PD.
I'll just give summary of what we did open that press day because we just November 4th today. So the November days for the high school, that's November 5th and 6th, election day and Monday prior. The focus at the high school level was NEASC, which is the England Association of Schools and Colleges Accreditation and Self-Study that are entering. So all the members of the staff that are participating in various committees as well as steering committee started to begin their work on their standards and made sure that everyone was in a place to understand what their charge is for the next two years.
When is our evaluation?
October of 2021.
Okay.
And the self-evaluation process is approximately?
We have a collab visit next fall. They revise the process and we're in the first cycle of revised process. I went to spend a collab visit this past fall with the ASK Connecticut School. We'll speed with it. We'll have staff or co-chairs in the standards committee also participating in visit for the next year.
Okay. So what are they, they're bringing it down to two days?
The collab visit is two days and it's more of a by-date collab. They, they work with you developing a growth plan and then their evaluation visit is more about the growth plan versus a work part, if you will.
Okay.
As in the past, it's, uh, they provide some things to make it more of a growing, reflective collab process versus a great.
Okay. Nice.
At the middle school, focus was on some of the improvements and professional development that we have been able to provide the school with regards to the SIG grant, which is a school program grant that we received. Patrick Flynn from Reficial Learning, the author of Feedback Before Listeners and Staff, as well as again curriculum and other committee work during the other day, which was Tuesday. At TBS and Jerome, we had readers, writers workshop and math workshop as well as problem solving workshops provided by our coaches, as well as versions of new professional development. At the middle school, which focused on using Charlotte Daniels' teaching framework to help improve engagement and instruction. Beth was able to lead the bat at Jerome and Carter led a variety of building-based committee meetings at TBS.
Very nice. Very productive.
Any question on PD opportunities? Obviously, we did not meet in November due to the inclement weather. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of our Veterans Day programs. They took place in all four buildings. Three of the schools honored our veterans on the 12th. NBIS honored the veterans on the 9th, the Friday prior to Veterans Day. Starting with Jerome Harrison, I know Ms. Anna was there present for the breakfast and I don't know if you want to comment on Beth. Similar to what we've done in the past, but we had the Fife and Drum Corps. The students read a number of essays for each teacher and it was, I thought, an outstanding day and a great turnout.
Yes. I have to tell you, speaking to customer engineers, it was very well done and we even had a WW2 bit.
Oh, wow.
That was an honor. It was very nice.
Which was extra special. Obviously, our WW2 veterans are, obviously because of their age, are declining at a rapid rate each day. So it was really a pleasure to have this, this person there with us and an honor to have him there. He promised to come back next year, so we're going to hold him.
It's my uncle.
It's your uncle. I knew that Ron walked in and was with him the whole time. I knew there was a connection. So, well, God bless him and thank him again. At TBS, the Veterans Day Assembly had a chorus and band and professional musicians presenting. They also had student essays and a video. Karen Cody presented video on carol boxes and the veterans were there and they participated and shared events. So it was a great day at Tattica Valley. At the intermediate school, under Mr. O'Rourke, we had the veterans come in and there was a presentation with chorus and a welcome. Then I know that they had snacks there at NBIS. And then the veterans went from team to team and spoke about their experiences throughout the building and that there was a luncheon to conclude on that Friday in the library for the veterans. And certainly last but not least, the high school did what they have done over the past several years where they had an introduction into their, one of their major fundraisers, which is the Wounded Warrior Organization. And they had breakfast, food, and coffee. They had National Anthem presented, introduction of all the veterans. And then the classes rotated throughout the gymnasium, going from table to table and sitting and meeting with the veterans and they shared their experience. And that concluded with a lunch hosted by our Wounded Warrior Organization at the high school and the food was provided by our student food services. So it was a great day and we had a lot of real positive feedback. And I know the veterans were truly touched and appreciative of our efforts to share in their heroics and what they did as young men and women throughout their lives. Another power moment. So thank you for the administrative team for putting that together and considering to honor our vets. School security is on there. Obviously, not going to go into too much detail of what we're doing, but you know that we put bids out for additional cameras at Tattica Valley and here at Central Office and then for updating, updating cameras throughout the district. That is being rebid because of a problem with the warranties on that, so that's, that's a good thing. There were some additional monies found by the council that will assist with this and lessen the amount the board will be putting into the project. So as soon as the bid is rewritten, it's going to go out and we're hoping we'll have that, those cameras up in the spring. We also submitted the state school grant for reimbursement on all of these projects. And then we also included additional projects that we've done over the last several years that were not included when we were eligible for the last school grant. So we're hoping we get 50% of those monies back, which will then offset some of the costs of what we've done. So that's, that's a good thing. And many different parties worked on getting those grants submitted and entered. The renovated is new project, as you know, we've had numerous conversations. The administrative team has been putting together the specs to have this go out to the public in conversations with the board as individuals and as a group. I know that there's interest in kind of broadening the scope of this project to look at different scenarios and possibly get pricing on if we had an option for a renovated is new versus a potential new high school. What would the differences in the cost be? And if I'm hearing that and that is your direction, I would like to then proceed to have that to our bid spec and gather more information as we move forward. Because we're going to look to really move this along as, as we get into the new year and have that ready to go out.
That's, that's my direction. I can't speak for anybody else, but I think it's, it's only prudent of us to look at both options.
Sure.
I mean, there could be no difference in, in cost. There could be a big difference in cost one way or the other. But, you know, it's up to the townhouse to make the decision, but I think we have to give them.
As much.
Yeah, absolutely. What do you guys think?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Why don't we evolve with it? I'm sensing the other ones in favor.
Yeah. We talked earlier this year when we met at the town council on school security, there was a hint that they would offer to extend another personnel for high school security. Remember that?
Yes.
Did we ever apply for that or try and get their consent or did they do that or not?
It, it would be in agreement with the council for us to bring another person on. And I think it was for the intermediate school, we were going to chairing an additional person from the two buildings and the part-time basis. So that is something that the, the grant was approved and the monies for the security camera, that was not included in that round. I certainly can reach out to the town manager and have him address the board and see if that's something, if there, if there are additional monies there, if they want to look into us. I think they, they partied a person.
I think we should pursue that. Okay.
I will do that.
Okay.
Okay. That covers renovated is new and that's, that's it for member four.
All right. Then we move on to committee reports. Negotiations, we're going to executive session.
Yes. That's all executive session.
Yep. Budget and operations. We have a budget calendar in front of us, exhibit C. Does anybody have any issues with any of the dates on that?
Not that I know of.
Well, if you look on the second page, there's actually a couple of dates for the workshops.
Yeah. And the January. So does anybody have any conflicts on either one of those? Were they?
I don't.
A year out from now?
No.
A month out from now?
2019, 2020. We're going in 2019.
That's not. That's not. Thank you. We're, we're good. We're not that good. We're not even two years old.
I'm like, we're really projecting for, I'm like, you want me to plan a year out? Let's take off.
Well.
Oh, my goodness.
It actually is the 1920 budget.
Budget.
But it's.
We're meeting it.
Right. But we're meeting it.
The calendar is actually.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So next month.
Yep.
So which day, which day would you prefer that? Do you want to spend your anniversary with us or the other day?
We don't celebrate our anniversary. No, literally, we don't because he was left on the eve of our first anniversary for Nam and I didn't see him for two years. And every time we tried to celebrate, something goes wrong. So we do celebrate our anniversary, honoring our birthday. We celebrate it in May or June, but.
That's why we, they celebrate and thank them for going monthly.
There you go.
Absolutely.
All right. So anybody else have any? So, so let's pick a date, the 24th or the 31st. Should we pick the 20th? Should we pick the 24th and leave the 31st as a snow day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we always seem to have an issue with one of these, so my suggestion is let's leave the 24th and leave the 31st as a snow day, just in case.
Is the 6:00 PM okay?
It's fine for me. How about it, Ben? Yes. So we're doing the 24th?
Yep.
You want to make a motion?
I'm moved that we have the budget meeting on January 24th.
It's six, right?
And in all due diligence, there's snow on that day for January 31st, 2019.
And to approve the rest of the calendar.
And to approve the rest of the budget calendar presented.
I've recommended by the secretary. Thank you, Ben. Wow. Second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Paul, Don, do you want to give us a rundown on budget and operations?
Well, we went through this year's budget, which is, there's nothing really problematic. In terms of the 1920 budget, we distributed and reviewed somewhat the administrative priorities. We also talked a little bit about the high school renovation project and the RFP that Scott and I were to earlier and a number of other capital items involving, for example, the water pump, get rid of the auditorium, unit ventilators at Tattica Valley and the high school, a, a domestic water pump system at Jerome Harrison. And we also had some discussion regarding the high school elevator.
And then we purchased the truck.
And we did purchase the truck, yes.
Okay. Okay. What did we do? We're going, well, we kind of did that. I also.
Say, did the PD?
Oh, yeah, but did PD. I'll be back.
Did PD. I distributed a letter from the state officially awarding the second installment of SIG grant, which is for implementation year one, 1819, is $407,000, as well as some of the work that we are currently doing. Thank you to Bruce and Don for coordinating a lot of the work that we are currently submitting to school by design for them to provide us with a skilled data interpretation audit, which will allow us to come up with a schedule that will both allocate resources effectively as well as capitalize on human resources for a combined high school, middle school, campus.
Okay. Pension? Don, did you make a meeting?
I did not.
Okay. Okay. And policy? We have, Beth, want to take policy?
Okay. We have a lot of policies for first read. Just a reminder that we have working ones in our packet. The blue is new information, the red is been removed and anything we're doing has just been moved within the policy. The policy P 1020, student attendance, truancy, chronic absenteeism, which is state statute changes. On page 10, there's something, if the outcome is not working, then we go to the Youth Service Bureau. And there's a recommendation to put our town truancy plan into policy. I know there were other policies where we had like addendums. So rather have it someplace else, have it written with the policy so that it's something you hold on. Policy P 1120.
I had a question on the 1020. Should I ask it now or are you all done?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at page four of 14, if you look at letter D, it says funeral or death in family or other emergency beyond the control of student's family, a written document explaining the nature of the emergency. By whom should you have that document written by? Is it okay if it's by a parent or does it need to be by a doctor or does it need to be by clergy? What makes it an excuse?
For, you said for a funeral?
It says here, it's under the student attendance, truancy, chronic absenteeism, 1020, page four of 14, letter D.
Yeah, that'd be a parent.
Okay.
Parent, absolutely.
Okay. Do you need to put that in or? Do you need to put that in or?
I don't. I mean, as administrative team works with this, a parent excuses that for an incident.
Well, this is, this is after the 10th. This is after the 10th.
Correct.
Right.
Or the student's 10th.
They don't need a reason for the first 10. Whereas then they don't need.
Right.
So this is thereafter. This is out. So this is, um, this is attendance 11 through 20.
Right. First thing you need.
So just a parent is fine? Okay. I don't mean to be nippy, but I was like, oh, boy. And then I had, oh, this was another one. I didn't understand this. Page seven of 14, if you look under E.
Same policy.
Same policy. It says readmission to school following voluntary withdrawal. I read this 10, 20 times. I don't understand the difference between one and two. Can you please explain it to me? Under E. I, I could not figure this out to save my life.
The only guy is 10 days.
And I think that that appears to be the difference.
Yeah. 10 days versus 90.
There's a 10-day stipulation.
So it seeks readmission within 10 days of school withdrawal or withdrawal. So this seeks readmission. The board may deny school accommodations to the student for up to 90 days. So I don't really understand what it's saying because it's, this is after 10 school days, but this says the board may deny school accommodations to his student for up to 90 school days from the date of the student's withdrawal from school.
One is mandatory, mandatory, and one is permissive. Number two is mandatory. If within 10 days he wants to come back, you have to provide accommodations. That's mandated. Number one is may deny, so it's permissive. It's up to the decision of the board itself.
Okay, so number one is up to the board itself?
Yep.
But the other thing, it seems like number two has the caveat that the readmission is sought within 10 days.
Correct.
Number one, it just says subsequently seeks readmission. So, I mean, it almost would be better if it was one, but I guess they chose to separate them.
I don't know if that's something we should look into, because it's really confusing. If you're looking at parents to go back to refer to this for anything, it's not clear at all. If any can figure it out, because you've got a law degree. Just saying.
Well, we, I mean, we could check with the attorney. I was also wondering whether we should make two, one.
Yeah.
And then make one say if they seek read.
Yeah. Because it almost sounds like, and I've read this, it almost sounds backwards 20 times. I could not figure it out.
Yeah, it almost sounds backwards.
So I'm asking.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Thank you. I know, it's so common.
So our attorney will look at that.
Anything else on 1020?
Um, hold on, I feel like I got my little notes. I see that.
Yeah. Big pink tags.
I know, I told you. No, I think I'm good.
Okay, move on to the second.
Yeah, I got a question on the second one, too. So that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Policy P 1125, drug and alcohol use.
Oh, 1120.
Oh, sorry, 1125.
11.
Student dis-1020. Yes.
Okay, student discipline suspension expulsion, again, statutory changes. There's what if expelled 16 to 17 years? That's the only thing that's not different.
Statutory.
I, I can't hear you. I know, I know you have an injury, but I can't hear. And I, and I have a hearing problem.
The perfect storm.
So we're not, we're not sinking, you and I.
No, but.
Beth, you're going to move Benson between you.
Yeah.
I can't really move.
Okay.
So she's.
Just what page?
It's 1120? No, no.
So possible.
Yeah.
The whole policy is mostly just statutory changes.
Okay.
Okay, and I had, I had two questions on this one. First one might need to be a new policy written that I don't know if it's worth looking into. The one issue I have with our student disciplinary suspension expulsion with a sharp object example knife is we do have a lot of students in our classes who do do Boy Scouts, who go fishing, who go camping, who might perhaps use their backpack for school, dump out their books, put a knife in there for camping, backpacking, fishing, hunting, whatever you may have. They forget the knife is in there, they throw their books back in, and all of a sudden, now you have a child with a knife accidentally in the school. What I am asking for is if there's any way for these children to have a safe haven, to go, oh, no, I'm looking for my notebook and my pocket knife is in here. If there's anything they can do safely without getting penalized for having it because it wasn't intentionally brought into the school, to be brought to a principal or administration saying, I brought this, they confiscated, they can't get it back unless a parent comes into the school.
They, they deal with that frequently.
But if we have a policy on that?
It wouldn't be a policy. It would be like, I'm coming to you and this was at my.
Because it seems like we have zero tolerance, and I feel like to have these children and parents know if there's zero tolerance, then I feel like we maybe should make a policy that.
The only way to set themselves up for it is that you're setting precedents for weapons coming into school with whatever.
But this is an accident. This is a child coming to you saying, I have this, we're opposed to it being in the backpack, the kid not saying anything, it falls out, and maybe you have a kid.
And they have the discretion to handle that at the middle and high school. If a kid came in and said, listen, I was working with my father and I have my leather man here, and they gave it to him, that's a different situation than us getting hearsay that kids are in possession of, and now we call them down and search them, and they are in possession of a knife.
But do the other children, like, is that known? Like, if by accident, a child.
All of their handbooks, it's crystal clear. The first message is don't bring a weapon in school.
Well, right, but this is accidentally, right. But this is, I mean, you have extended circumstances.
You don't want to, you set yourself up for, well, Johnny got away with it, how's my, had my knife. If, if they have the ability to use common sense in their discretion when a student comes in and says, I was out with my dad at Boy Scout camping, this got left in my bag, can I leave it with you and can you have my parent pick it up? They're going to make the right decision and handle that situation if they come to them. The situation changes when we get information, they have it in their backpack.
Right, but.
And then you're, or they're trading them online and doing things which we don't do.
Right. But I just wanted to make sure if it's accidentally in as long as. And my other question with the suspension, too, is, is there a policy or can there be a policy that whatever school that child gets the in-house, they have to serve that in-house? So therefore, if a child gets suspended in the middle school and they're asked to do a Saturday at the high school, is there, is there a policy put in place that a child from the middle school should not be doing an in-house at the high school?
There's no, there's no policy. It's to preserve resources, because we pay. We ride the bus together with them. We have kids traveling every day between grades, middle, high school, and the elementary schools. So if they disrupt it, they do something, then they earn a Saturday detention, they earn that. We, I don't have the, the resources.
So then you shouldn't, I mean, in my opinion, you shouldn't be offering it then if your school can't.
What do you mean offering?
You shouldn't be offered Saturday.
It's, it's a very effective deterrent. It's an inconvenience to parents, and the kids do not want to serve Saturday detention.
But it should be done at the school that it was, whatever happened, in my opinion. I mean, that's something maybe.
We haven't had a policy with the kids. We haven't, and we don't have.
So if I wanted a policy without a policy.
Many kids. It really wouldn't be a policy where we hold.
Well, if you don't have, if you don't have the resources to have it done in that school that the child.
What are you worried about happening? Like, what's the problem?
Well, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate for a middle school or even kindergarten or first or second grader going into the high school for serving a detention and having.
Wait, does kindergarten get Saturday detention?
It's for elementary schools.
It's only for middle school and high school?
So.
And they're on the bus together?
I think we should, you know, maybe look at having it be, right, but even with that, you have parents that drive their kids because they're not comfortable with them being on the bus.
But is detention supervised, correct? I mean, there's someone sitting there, so, I mean, there's no talking between kids. It's not the breakfast club, right?
No, it's, you're sitting in an open room with two adults, staff members.
Okay, so we'll just have to agree to disagree on that one.
And monitor.
Okay, that's fine.
Any more on?
Not on that one.
1125, Beth?
Oh, 1120?
That was 1120. We're on.
That was 1125.
Good housekeeping. There's 29 pages, not 28, and when you get to the last page, it's just 29 of 28, so.
Yeah, you know what, and just as a sort of brief explanation, we get these from the attorney, and sometimes if something gets added, that happens, I, I don't know why that happens in their system, but, you know, it'll, it'll number 30 of 28, 31 of 28, I don't know why it does that. Plus, sometimes that legend on the back, the little decoder thing, also counts as an older page, so as long as you get to the place where it's, you know, the policy, you've got the legal references and the adoption, then you've got it all.
Yeah, I know, when you go to cite something, you say reference to page some, so.
When we do the clean copies, it gets cleaned up.
Okay, all right.
Policy 1125, drug and alcohol use by students, again, with some statutory changes. It mostly has to do with self-admission meds, so that kids can carry their own, if they have a prescription, that they can, or NHA or something like that.
Carolyn, you have anything?
All right, no, no, not that one. We're moving along. We're moving along.
Policy 1140, does it restrict seclusion of students and use of exclusionary time out? So essentially, this is saying that it no longer can be in a 504 or IEP, that the behavior plan is based on, I need my notes here, behavior assessment individual for each student, and that it's by trained staff, the CIT, the crisis intervention team, and I don't know, Suzanne probably knows more about this intervention. Can you say anything?
Are there any questions on seclusion or use restraint? These are statutory, this came out a few years ago, they continuously updated this, and we are vigilant in making sure that we follow all protocols, that we have a situation where we do need a seclusion or restraint. Our staff is fully trained in all areas.
All right. Policy 1240, immunization, there's legal references are updated, and there's a link to the current immunization that is required. Does anyone have those? Question?
No, no, no.
Policy P 1245, health assessment, some statutory changes for oral health, and there were some questions in our discussion earlier about advanced registered nurse administration, which is worded on page 17, that we talked about just that, you know, it should be done by in a doctor's office.
Are you, we're on 1245, right?
Yeah.
I think on page three, we have to take action.
I agree. I am not happy with page three at all. No opting out should be, so I have an issue with C on page three.
Well, I was looking at part A, where in the bold print, it says, the board may choose to request an assessment in either grade six or grade seven. So that means we have to make a decision. Do we want to remove grade six?
The recommendation there is grade six and grade 10, because this refers to the oral health.
Right.
And that was the same, those are the same grades that we do the other health assessment in.
Well, so that's what I'm saying tonight, is we have to make a decision.
Before it's.
Next week, this is the first.
And I also have an issue with.
It's just a first read.
As for numbers, for letter C.
She's saying it's just a first read.
It's a first read.
Right, but.
No, I'm, yeah, but the next one, but the next one will vote, so you, he's expressing his opinion now before we vote.
And with letter C, I have an issue, because it says, so basically, as a parent, you're going to have somebody come in and look at your child, unless if you write a letter to opt out, I think that should be reversed. I think this is a, when you're looking into cities, I think this is a city format that they're using. I think for North Branford, it's a little different situation. I think most of the kids do get oral care, and I know as a parent, I would be so upset to have to sign an opting out. I think parents should be able to sign and opt into or, or having the child. I think that should be reversed.
Carol, which, which part of?
It's C on page three. It says, the parent or guardian shall be provided with prior written notice of an oral health assessment and be provided with a reasonable opportunity to opt out his or her child of such assessment, or may provide for such oral assessment him or herself. So basically, if I don't sign that paper, my kid goes twice a year. So if I forget to sign the paper and opt out, you guys are going to be paying for something that my child already has, and I think there's more children in North Branford, in Northford, that see a dentist regularly. I think this is a city plan. I don't think we really need to be this aggressive in North Branford.
Yeah, but read the first part, the first sentence, Dom.
Read the first sentence.
Read the first sentence. No, Carol, I mean.
Yeah, no oral health assessment should be made any public school unless a parent or guardian student consent to such a. So why does it say, so the assessment is made in the presence of the parent or guardian or in the presence of another employee, the parent or guardian shall be provided with prior written notice? So to me, it sounds like it's saying the same thing.
Well, it sounds like that they have to consent, that they have to consent to it, or they can opt out.
I just, isn't the state, this is, this is like following state statutes, right? Like, this is what the state's telling us to do?
For the attorney.
Can we change, how much can we interpret or change?
Yes, and, and I don't know if the, the legislation had inner cities in mind or the entire state of Connecticut, but I think they did have the entire state of Connecticut. But I think the first part of that, their protection as a parent.
You can't do it without a parent.
Right, can't do it without a parent.
So you can't do it.
Okay.
So I think that would help that.
I hope so.
So you can't do it.
Can we just look into that and make sure?
Confirm it, is that what you're asking?
Please.
Any others?
No.
Okay, Beth.
1245. 45?
24.
1,2400 child abuse, etc., was all reported. It, it now includes electronic filing and the addition of licensed behavior therapists. I think we still had some questions on page two at the bottom. Good afternoon.
Page two.
What page?
Page two.
Page two.
What section?
2400.
No, no, page two, you got sections three, A, B.
We get there, we get there, yeah. Yeah, the only changes I'm seeing are adding the.
Behavior on.
Behavior on.
No, I'm sorry, I went to the one, I went to the one before.
Okay, so that's it?
Yeah.
All right, so if anybody comes up with any other questions from this point forward, please email them to Dom, so that we can have them in a second read for the next meeting. Aces.
So I have, they have kids, they submit their artwork, and then they go on whose artwork will be represented on t-shirts and mugs and cards. So I have the t-shirt this year, which is this guy.
Oh, that's cute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's cute.
Yeah, so it's cute, so all the board members got one, so. Ooh, I'm a board member. Mug. And they have like a winter fair or something, and they sell the t-shirts, and then they have cards, and these are all different artworks for all different grades, for all the different buildings or schools, so they have a lot of schools, obviously.
And they sell those, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Or they blanket side.
Or they give them to the board member. No, yeah, so they're really, they're blanket side, so you can just use them for your Christmas cards, so they're really nice. And then, the actual meeting, we discussed, they had a little program on early head start. These are like 60 families, it's prenatal to age three, and they're co-partners with Middlesex Hospital. They do some updates on their bold steps, which I think I talked about a long time ago, but it's basically they're constantly revamping how they analyze the data they have in all the schools, because they have so many different schools that reach so many different types of kids. So they talk about different things, data collection, development, implement data, contracts and invoices, employee development and recognition, internal, external communication, advocacy, and they just give us update on how they're working to improve all of those levels. One of the ones for advocacy they're working on hard is the seclusion and restraint. The state changed a lot of the definitions of what they were. So, so now like restraint is something that it wasn't before, and they have a lot more paperwork they have to fill out, and they're trying to deal with that, because their schools have a lot more, obviously, restraints, and they've already had 547 restraints that were not restraints before. So someone has to do all the paperwork for those. So they're talking about how that affects daily operations, because, you know, it takes a lot more for staff. The other big thing is the Winter Grade School in Hampden. Hampden took back their building, so they have students that don't have a home next year, so they're trying to determine what's going on. They're talking about possibly purchasing the building, but they can't agree on a price. Hampden's way higher than what we want to pay. They may lease or purchase another location, or maybe they can reconfigure a space they already have. I think it's 300 and some odd students that go to Winter Grade. And then they have a foundation gala coming up, and that's about it.
Thank you. There was a wellness meeting, but you said you weren't able to make that. We have to add the wellness committee into the agenda, we kind of forgot about that one, because it's not.
What letter is she?
I'm sorry?
What letter is she, then?
I don't know. Building committee, there's nothing right now. Hopefully, we'll have a building committee again soon. Just for the record, the members have to pay their dues on that committee. That's a long one.
That's a real long one.
You're on building committee? We already did that? Oh, thanks, Beth. All yours. Communication, there was no meeting. Calendar, do you want to tell us something about?
Yeah, I just have, Aces has, is, just to, I guess to back up a step, a few years ago, Aces began releasing a regional calendar, which we are supposed to be trying to reasonably comply with. You can, you can deviate somewhat. They have now released the calendar for 1920 and 2021, which is nice, because we were doing our calendar two years out, and we stopped because they were only releasing it a year ahead. So they've gone to the two-year cycle. My question is, before we were following a regional calendar, there was always a board member on the calendar committee. We kind of stopped that practice.
I was on that last year.
Right.
Yeah.
But so, is, do we want to continue that? Do you want to change anything? So you're, you're willing to serve again?
I got you.
Okay. And then we're just, is there a meeting time that's better or worse for you?
I get out of work at 4:30, but if you guys need to meet during the day, I can get out for that meeting, because it's not that huge a.
Yeah, because we have to have, um, we do have to have representatives from the teachers and administrators.
Yeah, so what do you tell me and I'll work around you?
Okay.
What, when do you think that would be, like, out so we could know?
Well, I mean, that's why, because this includes one year out this time, um, I think we ought to try to do it reasonably quickly so we could get it to the board, say, no later than February. Because at least that gives people some planning window for the first year.
There's not really a lot of, um, because I used to be on calendar committee way back. And, um, there's really not a lot of decision-making though, is there?
Well, start date, if you're looking at short, you can abbreviate it, February or full April. Depending where Christmas falls, it's pretty, it's pretty standard. We are in session on Veterans Day. We don't, um, have days off for the Jewish holidays. So our flexibility, it's really what day you want to start on.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
That's the biggest part. Do you want to go before the long weekend or after?
It's always nice to start on a Wednesday. You have a three-day week, a four-day week, and then a full week. It's nice. I hate starting before Labor Day. I hate it.
Everyone's gonna have different, so it's, you're gonna get it together. You have the teachers, the administrators, the parent, board, or not parent, parent and board, and, you know, Dawn, so. So interestingly, um, the regional calendar for nineteen twenty has schools starting for students on Wednesday and for twenty twenty-one has schools starting for students on Monday. So those are some of the things we'll have to consider and that's because of how Labor Day pulls. So, yeah.
So will you let me know or do you want to come up with dates now? Okay.
Well, what I'll do is we'll, we'll come up, try to come up with a few dates and let you know when then.
That's fair.
Dawn, is it still looking like the, the end of the year would be like the ninth, the tenth?
So, this year?
You've always been.
For next year. You mean, as far as in this calendar, well, the problem with this calendar is it only counts one hundred and seventy-two days. So this would be June, for us would be June eleventh would be the last day of school according to their calendar.
And then we usually tack on the five days.
Well, if, yeah, if we end up with a break for snow days.
But we don't usually tack on more than five snow days. Like, we usually do to five and then are we taking?
No, we don't do that.
No, it was just.
Yeah, it just keeps going.
Well, when you, when we're planning on getting out early enough, you know what I mean, it's.
Yeah, we're very, we're really early this year and we made it to the break without a snow day, which is a good thing. We had one early dismissal, one delay up until now, so if everything aligns.
You just created a snowstorm tomorrow.
Yeah, aligns. We're gonna enjoy June.
It's gonna be a blizzard tomorrow, seriously. Although it's supposed to be sixty tomorrow.
We're gonna get it.
It's gonna be rain.
He just jinxed it.
Thanks, Beth. Okay, so then you guys are gonna handle that and maybe have it for the next meeting, the February meeting.
Okay.
Go to the board. Do you have anything for go to the board?
I went to that band concert, um, Mrs. Jones and Meredith Zell and, um, it was fabulous. Very creative too. They added their own little thing, like, um, Mrs. Zell did like a mix-up thing with the creators where they played all different Christmas carols and then at the end she liked her music and like threw it because it was like all, it was cute. It was like a lot of ad lib and it was very cute, so I highly enjoyed it. I know we had them here earlier, but I got to see it in full action and it was very cool, very cute.
That's the fun part of it, Beth. Um, anybody else?
I went to the Kaya family at Jerome Harrison. That was really, really cute. That was really cute. Students were adorable. They did a really good job. Very well done, Beth. Very well done. Did anybody go to Medicare? I missed that. I missed Angels with Snowmen, whatever you put on the window. It totally blew by me this year. I was so disappointed. I liked something else. I can't remember. Yeah, I have to blog on that. Um, visitors and press. Mr. Samstino?
It's, uh, Phil Savers Town. Uh, as a veteran in town, I'm a deputy principal, a new face, a teacher. Uh, but again, very old man here and what you do for the vets. Uh, the, the week before there was a luncheon here at Park and Renter was, it's every year. Gina Groming, Scotsman, Danian, a few words. And the best part of the day was when the little ones from TBS come over and they'll land with a little car. Doesn't get better than that.
That's right.
So thanks a lot.
Thanks, Beth.
And we, uh, we also had a real one too, Beth, in that amongst the high, I could, I usually go to high school because I like to interact with the students, but we had a real one too, Beth, there.
That's really great.
And both of us wish to be back next year. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I am Christine Cohen. I am the Senate-elect for the twelfth district. So I'm going around and just attending town meetings to learn as much as I can about the districts within the town. And just wanted to say that my door is always open and I look forward to having lines of communication open uh, between Cranford, the Board of Ed here and, um, the legislature. So, uh, look forward to that and thank you for your service as a fellow Board of Ed member.
I was gonna say you are a Board of Member and that.
And I know how, in Gilbert, actually. Um, so I know how labor intensive it is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section one dash two twenty-five of the Connecticut General Statutes as permitted by section one dash two hundred and six A, C, and E of the Connecticut General Statutes to discuss agenda items seven C leads, eight G security and nine A negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the unpaid leave for Stephanie Cangiano Barry under article twenty of the contract between the North Cranford Board of Education and the North Cranford Federation of Teachers through March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Anafria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gina Bosalmo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
I'd like to make another motion to approve the unpaid leave for Erica Bezuto under article twenty of the contract between the North Cranford Board of Education and the North Cranford Federation of Teachers through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Anafria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gina Bosalmo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between the North Cranford School Administrators Association and the North Cranford Board of Education effective July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Anafria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gina Bosalmo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
And our next regular. That's a bad word. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy New Year.
Mary, feel better.